We're going to start the meeting.
Members, let's resume the meeting. This session is on public finance. I'll now invite the Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury to give some opening remarks. This session of the special meetings of the Finance Committee will examine the expenditure estimates of the Treasury Branch and the related departments. The Treasury Branch oversees several policy areas, which cover revenue and financial control, provision of central support services within the government, and maintenance of government properties. Before the question session begins, I would like to brief members on the few points. On estimates of expenditure, the estimated total recurrent expenditure of the Treasury Branch and departments under its purview for 2018-19 is $8.163 billion. The amount represents an increase of $544 million, around 6.7% over the original estimate of last year. As regards our work in the coming year, I'd like to highlight the following areas. On public finances, we continue to uphold the principles of fiscal prudence in managing resource allocation to support the implementation of government policies. On tax policy unit, the tax policy unit was set up in late April last year with its present priority being to capitalize on the tax policy to facilitate the development of Hong Kong's industries and economy. Over the recent past, the unit has focused on developing the two-tiered profit tax rate system, working out the details of providing additional tax deduction for R and D expenditure and making consequential amendments to the Inland Revenue Ordinance. In the coming year, the unit will work with the related bureaus of departments to study other tax measures that are conducive to the economic development of Hong Kong. As regards the problem of Hong Kong's narrow tax base in view of the healthy fiscal reserve held currently by the government and the controversy over broadening tax base, we consider that there is no pressing need to commence consideration and discussion on this matter at this juncture. International tax cooperation. To deliver our obligations on international tax cooperation, we'll implement the minimum standards of the package to counter base erosion and profit shifting by enterprises. In this connection, we introduced an amendment bill into the Legislative Council in January this year. The government is working closely with the Legislative Council to facilitate this scrutiny in the hope that members will support the early passage of the amendment bill. On implementing the automatic exchange of financial account information in tax matters, we will commence the first exchanges with the jurisdictions concerned this September. Besides, we'll continue to expand Hong Kong's network of comprehensive avoidance of double taxation agreements, CDTAs. So far, Hong Kong has concluded 39 CDTAs, including one signed with India in mid-March this year. We'll continue to identify potential negotiation partners, especially countries along the Belt and Road, with a view to further expanding our CDTA network and bringing the total number of CDTAs to 50 over the next few years. Government offices. It is government policy to relocate government offices with no location requirements out of high-value areas as circumstances permit to optimize the use of land resources. The government has decided that the Wan Chai Government Offices compound, WCGOC site, will be used for the development of convention and exhibition venues, hotel facilities, and grade A office space. Relevant government departments are actively taking forward nine new government-building projects to accommodate the departments and the judiciary to be relocated from the WCGOC. We expect the first phase of the relocation to start after the West Kowloon Government Offices is ready for occupation in 2019. Meanwhile, the government plans to seek funding approval from the FC of Letchcombe for another three replacement building projects, including the inland revenue tower, the treasury building, and the government data center complex in the first half of 2018. Relevant bureaus and departments are also preparing for the remaining five replacement building projects with a view to seeking funding approval from the FC in due course. We'll closely monitor the progress of the replacement building projects and endeavor to complete the relocation exercise as scheduled. We look forward to the support of the Letchcombe. Chairman, my colleagues now will be happy to take questions from members. Mr. Kenneth Leng, four minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions. First, what's the cost of tax collection in Hong Kong? Comparing to other countries, how are we faring? Second question, I'd like to ask the Treasury or the Commissioner of the Inland Revenue. In the year 2016-17, how much tax revenue was collected from additional tax? And in that financial year, in terms of charges, criminal charges of tax evasion, how many of these cases were successfully prosecuted? Another question for the Treasury. Last week, there was a research paper issued by the Letchcombe Secretariat on reserves in the past few years. In 2016, there was a future fund set up, and it was said that $220 billion would be set aside for alternative investments. But according to the research report, only $110 billion or so were put to actual use. What about the missing sum? And the public is curious about it. Three questions. Commissioner for Inland Revenue.
Thank you, Chairman. A member for the question about the cost of tax collection in 2016-17. According to our statistics, a cost of $0.55 were incurred per $100 tax collected, around 0.55%. And we do not keep formal statistics, and we have not compared ourselves with other tax authorities around the world. But as we discuss with other tax ministers in other jurisdictions, the cost usually stands at 2% to 3%. So Hong Kong is on the low side. For 2016-17 taxation year, that is the additional tax to be collected in accordance with Section 82 of the IRO because of incorrect tax returns, et cetera. The amount stood at some $52 million. So that's additional tax under Section 82A. But there are also circumstances in which we investigate into tax avoidance or tax evasion. Instead of invoking Section 82A, we invoked another section. That is, if the taxpayer understands as he's in the wrong and if he's willing to pay the compensatory tax, then that's the tax we collected, and the amount stood at $745 million. We had five prosecutions in 2016-17, and the defendants were successfully convicted. As for the penalties, additional tax, et cetera, all these information are available in our annual report.
Secretary, would you like to take the remaining questions? Or the permanent secretary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Leng, for the questions so that we have this opportunity to explain the situation. As for the future fund, it was set up in 2016 with an objective to allow the government to get a higher return for medium-to-long-term investment. So that's saving for the future. There are two parts to the future fund. One is investment portfolio. The other is a long-term growth portfolio. Now, you may think that, say, in 2018, half of the allocation for future fund has been invested in the long-term growth portfolio. But it doesn't mean that the other half is just left idle. It's in fact put under the investment portfolio. So the difference is the mode of investment under the two portfolios. But does it mean that in future, all the allocations will be put under the future fund, the long-term growth one? Because the objective of the future fund is to yield return. In fact, in the past few years, we have gradually increased the resources put under long-term growth portfolio. At present, it stands at 50%. In the future, depending on circumstances, we'll also review the mix. In fact, during each financial year, we conduct a review. Mr. Ronny Chen, four minutes. First, a question put by Mr. Jeffrey Lam. The reply is 006 about office buildings rented by government departments. Well, it is said that in 20... The government rented 3.4 million square feet of office buildings outside government premises. I'd like to know what the proportion is comparing to total government premises. And I'd like to know whether it is an upward or downward trend because I understand that this is a moderately upward trend. And I understand that in 20... In the beginning of 2019, the West Kowloon Government Offices will be completed. And I understand that the GPA will be... Or the GFA will be around 500,000 square feet. Well, does it mean that a large proportion of the West Kowloon Government Offices will be for government departments' use? GPA?
It is true that in relation to government offices and the office space rented by government departments is standing at a ratio of 7 to 3. So that's about 30% of office space rented in the private sector and 70% coming from government buildings. Regarding completion of the West Kowloon Government Offices, the government departments currently house in the three Wan Chai government buildings will be re-provisioned. And other government departments currently renting private office space will also be re-provisioned in West Kowloon Government Offices. So indeed, the expenditure on renting office premises will come down with the completion of the West Kowloon Government Offices. But I'd like to point out that, in fact, the rental has stayed at a rather stable level over the past three years. It's slightly... It has slightly increased because of the increase in rental. But on the whole, it's maintained at the ratio of 7 to 3. Next question about government car parks in reply, zero number 007... Or 008. I understand from your reply that 10 government car parks are outsourced to operators in the private sector. And that is why you do not have statistics. I'd like to know the total revenue coming from these 10 government-owned car parks. And because the car parks are now operated by contractors, the government is unable to get any statistics. But the problem is, Hong Kong is short of parking spaces. Will the government consider, including in the lease conditions, a clause in the contract that the utilization rate must reach a certain level for the contract to be renewed? GPA? Thank you for the question. Regarding the 10 public car parks and the revenue generated from these 10 car parks, I do not have information at hand. I'll supply the information later. But on the whole, we have a tendering system for these 10 car parks. And as such, we do not require any reporting on the utilization of parking spaces. But we understand that the operators of these car parks would also like to maximize the utilization based on the commercial or the business interest. And if necessary, we can inquire with the contractors or operators on the leasing matters. But we need to also comply with the contractual spirit because it may not be feasible to include a clause. So without affecting market operation, we try to get information on utilization.
Mr. Wu Chi Wei, thank you. Number 31, Mr. James Toll asked if the administration has... Asked for any information in relation to agricultural land on indigenous villages. And you said that the Rating and Valuation Department has not kept such information. Well, under the Ratings and Valuation Ordinance, agricultural land and indigenous villagers' land are exempted from rates. But what if they have sold the land? So it's no longer a site occupied by indigenous villagers. Do they still get this exemption? And under the ordinance, agricultural land is nursery, orchard, a fish pond, or poultry-rearing site. And if it is not used as such, it is a brownfield site, and they will have to pay rates. There are lots of agricultural land being turned into brownfield site use for the logistic industry. Do they pay rates? Thank you. You ask about rates exemption of indigenous villages. If it is a designated villages, then it's exempted. So what if the property is sold to a non-indigenous villagers? They still... It is still exempted from rates? Yes, in specified villages. Where structures are erected on brownfield site, it is not in line with the exemption provision under the ordinance. We charge rates. My question was, if it's turned into a brownfield site, do they have to pay rates? Yes. Can you supply us with information? Because you said that you have not kept any information. And now, you say that you charge... You collect rates from them, which is true. If where there is an exemption of rates, we don't have the power to keep a record. But if we collect rates from them, then yes, we do keep record. Well, the Audit Commission in 2016 said that there is no mechanism to deal with this matter. So how do you find out whether sites are turned into brownfield sites? We conduct site investigation, and we have information with the District Land Office. Well, there is no information sharing between your department and other departments. But we will know if there is a structure erected on a brownfield site. And we have established a mechanism to obtain information to assess rates. Can I ask the Ratings and Valuation Department to provide the following information? That is, if rates are paid in relation to the use of brownfield site, can you supply the information to us? I would like to know, well, do you have scope of the definition of brownfield site? This is a very interesting reply. I... You say that you have the information. You say that the District Lands Office will give you the information. And now you ask me for clarification. It's just that I'm afraid that your definition of brownfield site is different from ours. So I would like to know about the scope more clearly. Well, just in short, say, Wang Chow. There are about 24 hectares of land that is commonly known as brownfield site. In relation to these sites, do they pay rates? I think so. Can you provide us with the information? Yes, after the meeting. What about the Tai Tong and the Laichu Valley? I believe so. Can you give us the information about the size of the site and also the amount of rates paid? Just Wang Chow? No, Wang Chow and Tai Tong. Next, Mr. Ray Chan. I would like to follow up on... 0049 is a question asked by Mr. Eddie Chu. He asked if the administration would consider cash now for everyone to benefit. This is asked on the back of what... Of the budget delivered on the 28th of February by Mr. Paul Chan. The administration said that on the 23rd of March, the Financial Secretary has announced a new policy that is caring and sharing. So if the amount is different from the original budget, I understand that in the resumption... In the committee stage of the second reading, resumption of the appropriation bill, there will be amendments. On the 23rd of March, Paul Chan said that the total amount depends on the number of applicants. Estimate... Preliminary estimate is about $11 billion. Have you worked out the amount yet? Because you have to prepare committee-stage amendments. I would like to also ask about administration fees for this caring and sharing. What is the administration fees? Well, that is, that will decide whether people find that successful. In 0029, I asked a question about rates exemption because that is the proposal with the least administration fees because only about $480,000 is used to administer a proposal that involves $17.8 billion. So I would like you to... I would like to ask you if you have included administration fees or administrative costs. If I were to ask, do I ask the Financial Services and the Treasury? Or do I ask the Labor and Welfare Bureau? Ms. Lao? The member is right. When it comes to the caring, sharing scheme, the eligibility is as the Financial Secretary announced on the 23rd of March. We have been making preparations. That includes committee-stage amendments in the appropriation bill. There are amendments on two areas. First, in relation to the caring and sharing scheme and the disbursement of payment to eligible persons as well as administrative costs. That will be a subhead. We will propose a CSA on that. Well, we have set an amount of $4,000. There is also the additional payment of social benefits. If they do not get $4,000... If they get less than $4,000 under additional payments from social security schemes, the shortfall will be paid in addition to them to make it up to $4,000. And that will be another CSA because the two sums will be under two heads. We're working out the figures. You will know about it when we submit the CSA. So we'll know only when you give us the CSA. And at the moment, you can't divulge the information. The ballpark figure, especially the caring and sharing scheme, will be similar to the figure announced by the FS. We're now working out the details. That includes the administrative costs. You will see the total amount in the CSA. Well, it seems that the deadline for members' CSA is 21st. When will we see the CSA? Same deadline. Next, Mr. Gary Fan. I would like to ask about 0043. It's a reply to Ms. Tanya Chen's question. I think Ms. Chen's question has not been answered in relation to the specific uses of the housing reserve. So far, there is about $78.8 billion accumulated. And it says that this is to meet 10-year public housing supply target. And in 2018-19, the HA has accumulated over $9.4 billion. Mr. Chan, the chairman of the HA, said that in the coming five years, there will be sufficient fund for the HA to meet expenses. There is no need to use the housing reserve. Can the administration explain to us? Does it mean that the $78.8 billion in the housing reserve will not be used in the coming five years? There won't be any specific use? She... Ms. Chen asked about the use in 2018-19. But according to what the HA said, that in the coming five years, it will not be touched. That means during that time, $78.8 billion will be left untouched. And if with the sound finances of the HA, do you still need to keep that much money in the reserve? Ms. Lao? The understanding of the finances of the HA is based on what the HA said. Well, the original intent of the reserve remains unchanged. This is to meet future housing supply need. This will provide stability to our finances. So the use is no different from when it was first established. The housing reserve is not just sitting there. Just like our other reserves is there, is being invested to generate return. So it's not the case that it's just left there, unused. In the budget, after the FS has talked about our financial situation and our reserve, he reported to the public the accumulated amount of the housing reserve so that everyone will know. That means in the coming five years, it will be used to generate investment return. Is that right, Ms. Lao? That depends on whether there will be a change in situation in the coming five years. We will regularly talk to the housing authority to see what is the latest financial situation. Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Leng, four minutes. Thank you. I would like to ask about 0053. That is in relation to the Tax Policy Unit. In the 2017-18 fiscal year, the FS made it out that this tax policy unit is very high-sounding. But I see that there is very tight manpower and resources. You said in your reply, 0053, that there are two professionals in this tax policy unit. So I'd like to know the background of these two tax professionals. Is it an internal deployment within the IRD? Or is it an open recruitment exercise? For two tax professionals to be in charge of the formulation of tax policies in Hong Kong, isn't ridiculous? You only have two professionals. Do you have any longer-term plan to increase resources and manpower?
Ms. Alice Lao. Thank you, Chairman. I understand members' concern about the Tax Policy Unit. But let me first begin by saying that for the TPU, Tax Policy Unit, it is a dedicated unit set up under the Treasury. Even before the TPU is set up in our bureau, we have dedicated staff for tax policies. So TPU is just some sort of supernumerary unit. It is not the only unit in charge of taxation matters. As we set out in our reply, there are three dedicated staff working under TPU. Well, but in your reply, you said two tax professionals, right? The three staff members working in this dedicated unit with two tax professionals. They have very rich background in taxation matters. One came from an open recruitment exercise, previously worked in the private sector. And so the other one, the officer was actually a retired colleague from the IRD.
the officer was actually a retired colleague from the IRD. I'd like to follow up on zero one seven as well. A question put by me about the automatic exchange of information on tax matters and the BEPS package. You're going to increase manpower. I understand that you're going to recruit the chief assessor and also senior assessor post. But I understand that many, in recent years, many of the senior assessors will be retiring. So I'd like to know more about your establishment and your deployment regarding especially chief assessor and senior assessor post. How are you going to replenish your establishment? P.S. Perhaps the Commissioner can take your question. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Member, for the concern on my work. Similar to other government departments, indeed, we face a retirement succession issue in terms of international cooperation on tax matters. We have a promotion mechanism and internal training to address this issue. So for chief assessor, we have internal promotion. And on a day basis, we also have a team of staff members specializing in international tax cooperation, for example, BEPS or AEOI. As for the vacancies arising from promotion, this will be, they will be filled up by new recruits. And there'll be continuous training to familiarize our colleagues with tax matters and international tax cooperation. We're going to adjourn the meeting soon. Last member, Mr. Wu Chi Wei. I'd like to follow up on rates paid in relation to agricultural land in the new territories. Well, if I understand correctly, the director of RND just now seemed to be suggesting that the lands department would inform you that this is no longer a piece of farmland. And not until then will you proceed to assessing the rates payable. Then can you tell me, over the past ten years, how many cases were there in which the lands department informed your department that the land is no longer used as agricultural land but brownfield operations? We'll go back and check the information and provide the information afterwards. Well, my question is, if the lands department didn't inform you about the change of use and that it's brownfield operation, does it mean that you would not have any idea that this piece of land would no longer be subject to any exemption arrangement? When we, when our colleagues do their work, they'll also note, take notes of whether there is any change of use in the adjoining sites? We rely on information from the lands department, but it doesn't mean that in our field work, we don't pay attention to these matters. Then can you tell me, for all the ratable properties in the new territories, brownfield sites are no longer used for agriculture, can you give me information on their locations and size? And also the rates payable every year? Chairman will go back and check with our department and provide the details later. I'd like to follow up on it later. We do not have figures available at hand today. But I just want to comment that this will be very peculiar in the eyes of the public. And I have reason to suspect that under this mechanism, the majority of land in the new territories seems not being ratable properties under your mechanism. I don't know. I need comprehensive information from the RNVD, including the following matters. First, how you confirm that this land, piece of land is no longer used for agriculture? Let me give you one example, fly tipping. Now, this is not agricultural purpose and also recreational ground such as one you have in Tai Tong. So I'd like to learn about the government's mechanism because we'd like to make sure that the government has a mechanism to prevent tax avoidance causing a loss to the, to the public office. I want to clarify one point. We do have information on exemptions, well, sites being exempted from rating. So that means you still have information for us. We'll go back and collect relevant information in our department. So if it is exempt from paying rates, what information, who would have this information? Is it the lands department, Chairman? But if it is exempted from assessment of rates, there'll be no record from us. But at least we have information on what site would be exempted from the assessment of rates. I want to know whether there is any tax evasion. Well, if it's, if the assessment is to be done, we'll have information in the RNVD. But how do I make sure that if the use of land is changed and that is no longer subject to exemption of rates, who would, who would be pulling the government's purse strings? As I mentioned, the lands department has this information. And when our colleagues do their field work, they will also verify the information. Is it that you will cross-reference your information with the lands departments? Well, through the information, we conduct the assessment of rates if necessary. I don't think the government can answer your question. How about after the meeting, you should, you just chase after Mr. Tang and ask him further? And with the information source, please submit that to the FC. But you should talk to him face to face. You should make sure what information he should provide. So that concludes the session. The next session begins at four twenty.